I'd like to call the Monday, September 16, 2024 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Turbin.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a report on our minutes of August 5 regular session, work session, and executive session, August 8 executive session, August 9 executive session, August 14 executive session, August 19 work session and executive session, September 4 executive session, and September 9 executive session? We've been busy. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, yes, Mayor, and I've read the minutes for all those meetings, for the dates that you cited, and upon review, I found them to be complete and correct. I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. I'd like to add something under status reports that's not currently on the agenda as printed. It, I have a resolution to appoint Katie M. Schmitty as city manager designate on October 14, 2024, and as city manager on November 1, 2024, whereas the council of the city of Oakwood conducted a formal search for a city manager to succeed Norbert S. Klopsh, and whereas approximately 24 applications were received and reviewed with the assistance of an outside consulting firm, and whereas the top eight candidates were interviewed by council and narrowed to four finalists, who were then interviewed by senior staff of the city, and whereas council narrowed the pool again to two candidates who were selected for final review, and whereas the council made its final decision on this matter and now desires to formalize that choice by placing it in the form of a resolution, and again, as we are, therefore, that we resolve that Katie Schmitty be appointed as city manager designate effective October 14, terms and conditions shall be set forth in a letter agreement dated September 12, 2024, which has been signed by both Katie M. Schmitty and Mayor William Duncan, is hereby ratified and confirmed. Commencing November 1, upon the retirement of Norbert Klopsh, Katie Schmitty shall automatically succeed to the position of city manager. I would introduce that resolution and ask for a second.
Second.
And all those, you want to call the roll, I'd like to do a roll call, please, on this.
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin.
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson.
Yes.
And Katie Schmitty is here in our audience tonight, so come on down to the podium. She currently is the finance director at the city of Springdale, and she served as finance director there, and she previously served as the finance director of the city of Montgomery. She was CFO of Hamilton County Community Action Agency after holding various positions for over 18 years in Butler County. She has a bachelor's degree in accounting from Xavier University and a master's of public administration from Wright State University. She's also a graduate of the Leading Education and Developing Lead Program from the University of Virginia. She's been married to her spouse, Joel, who's also here in attendance for 24 years, and they have two children. Welcome, Katie, and it's my pleasure to introduce you to the people watching on TV and all the people in the room here. Congratulations.
Thank you for that very warm welcome. I am so excited and honored to move into the big footsteps of Mr. Norb. I am so happy to be here. I am so excited to work with your phenomenal senior staff and all the staff members here, and of course, council as well, to make sure that we keep Oakwood the premier community it is, and thank you again.
Very good. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you on October 14th.
Right, don't be late.[313.36][313.36](Laughter).
All righty. The next item on our status reports is we have an Auditor of State Award, and I, we've had this so many times, it doesn't, it's almost like the academic decathlon, you know? We just expect our people to be just slightly above.
Didn't we just do this? We just did this, didn't we? Déjà vu right now.
Yes, but anyway, Auditor of State Keith Faber recently recognized the city of Oakwood on a successful completion of their 2023 financial audit. The recognition included presentation of their Auditor of State Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and compliance with the applicable laws for the state for the year ended 2023. Less than 10% of the local governments and other public agencies audited by the state of Ohio received this designation. We have talked about, you know, transparent and fiscally accountable organizations in government. They are fewer, few and far between. I've always described as a retired CPA myself, good controls in city government or even business as a whole starts with the tone of the top. And the tone of the top here is we want to be fine stewards of our public funds. We believe totally in ethical conduct and honest reporting, and Cindy leads that department and complies with every one of those qualifications, and I'm just so excited to present that recognition to you personally. And my press release says, "We commend city, Cindy Stafford, and her finance department employees, all and all of city staff for once again earning this recognition." So congratulations. So now Cindy gets to come down to the podium and say a few comments, too. See, she didn't know I was going to do that, so we're going to let everybody speak tonight.
I owe a big thank you to my staff because if it wasn't for them every day coming in and dotting those i's and crossing those t's, and really, as you said, it's a tone at the top. It starts with council, your expectations, your goals, that filters down to senior staff and their expectations, and then my expectations for the finance department. And so again, I'm very proud of each and every one of them. The assistant finance director, I'm going to name them each because they work hard every day. My assistant finance director, Tracy Martin. The tax administrator, Linda Merker. Our utility specialist, Melissa Russell. Our new payroll specialist, Barbara Class, and then also Michelle Baker, who's our income tax clerk. So we, we couldn't do it, I couldn't do it every day. We couldn't accomplish that without all of their hard work. So, thank you to them.
Again, congratulations on this award. It really is a great achievement, and we're really proud of you.
Yes, very much so.
Thank you.
I remember before I became the mayor, I was on the budget review committee, and I know Lee Turbin also was on that committee, and I would, while we were doing budgets every year, I would take the first documents that the city sent to us, and that was before Cindy started here, and I would create the mother of all Excel spreadsheets looking for formula errors, and I would normally find at least one, but since you've became our finance director, I have now shredded my Excel spreadsheet because I no longer need to look for formula errors. So again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. And then our last status report is we had a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we have asked Samantha Elder if she would accept that position, and she has agreed to do so. So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Samantha Elder to fill the vacancy on our Board of Zoning Appeals, and I would ask for a second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, and that will be so ordered. And now, for the reason that most of you came here tonight, it's time for our July and August beautification award winner. So we're going to show a video first, and then we, a lot more people won than are here tonight, so we're going to try to sort through everybody. I'll make sure I don't miss anybody, and I'll come down after the video, and I'll come down and hand you your award. So we'll go ahead and start from there. Congratulations to everybody that won. I'm going to try to do something different this time. You know, we have obviously a lot of winners here. Not all of them could be here, so I'm going to try to pick out every one of you that are here, but if I miss one of you, please raise your hand so I can, you know, not look a total fool on TV, Channel 6. So I'm coming down right now. We have Karen Carter, 2406 Roya Road. Congratulations, Karen. And we have Charlene and Steve Ratkiff, number 2, Ivanhoe Avenue. They are here. Congratulations. Okay. Okay, now we got a guest. Not you, not you, not you. Got them, got our, are you here for an award? Well, then you need an award. Okay, all right. And the folks in the back, no, you're all here, so I think we only have two. We'll make sure that everyone else gets those sent to them into the mail. So it's a nice picture of their property and a certificate congratulating them for their beautification awards. And as you could tell by that video, it's unbelievable how beautiful all these houses are in Oakwood, so a lot of choices. Okay.
Yes, you are free to go.
We will not take the award back if you leave. It's okay. Congratulations.
Okay, this is, after we finish this, it's normally the visitors' portion of our meeting where people are welcome to come up and address council on anything they would like city council to speak about, and if you have someone, please come down, and if you could state your name and address for the record, we welcome you.
Hello there. Oh, wow.[1301.55][1301.55](Laughter).
Good evening.
Hot mic, hot mic. All right, hello, I'm Holly Pullman, and I live at 15 Schaefer Boulevard. I'd like to thank city council for having me this evening and being able to speak here, and thank you to the community members here tonight for your unwavering support. Oakwood is known for its high standards when it comes to public health and safety, one of the many reasons that I love living here. I believe that we have an opportunity to protect both our citizens and our environment by ending the city's use of toxic lawn chemicals and transitioning to an organic land management program. In Oakwood, we let our kids play in the parks, we walk our dogs along the boulevards, and we take our family photos at Smith Gardens. Unfortunately, every one of these locations are routinely treated with toxic lawn chemicals. These chemicals linger long after the application and impact the health of our community. Of the 40 most commonly used lawn chemicals nationwide, including 24D, which Oakwood uses, 26 are known possible carcinogens linked to cancer. 32 are tied to liver or kidney damage, 21 to birth defects, and 33 are toxic depollinators. 21 of these chemicals can seep into our groundwater. There is simply no rational argument for exposing the members of our community to such risks. Organic alternatives are safer, more sustainable, and can even prove more cost-effective. When lawns rely on synthetic chemicals, they deplete the soil of natural nutrients, creating a dependency on repeated applications. Organic land management helps plants become self-sustaining, removing the need for any chemicals at all. A report from the New York State Legislature found organic programs can be up to 25% less expensive than chemical-based ones over five years. That's 25%. If Oakwood changed these practices, we would be prioritizing the well-being of our citizens and our environment. This decision would reflect the values that we all share: a commitment to safety, sustainability, and the health of our future generations. We cannot make this critical shift without the support of city council. I provided a packet detailing the chemicals that have been used in our public spaces and possible steps to transition to an organic land management program. I urge you to take action to protect the health of our community and the public spaces that we all share. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
I see your packets.
Are those the packets for council? Okay, we'll make sure we get those. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council at this time? This would be your chance to come up and speak to council. Okay, then we will close the visitor section of our meeting and go to legislation, and I have another resolution. This one's longer than the last one. That's okay. This is a resolution to express appreciation for 50 years and counting of the public service of, public service by leisure services director and horticulturist Carol D. Collins. Whereas on August 19, 1974, Carol Collins was hired by the city of Oakwood as city horticulturist, a position she held until March 30, 1998. And whereas on March 30, 1998, Carol Collins was appointed to the position of leisure services director, a position she continues to hold to this day. And whereas on April 11, 2024, Carol surpassed Harry Carter as the longest-serving employee of the history of, in the history of the city of Oakwood. Harry Carter served in the Oakwood Public Works Department from May 9, 1922 until December 31, 1971, a period of 49 years, 7 months, and 22 days. Whereas on August 19, 2024, Carol celebrated her 50th anniversary as an employee of the city of Oakwood, a truly remarkable milestone. Whereas over the course of the past 50 years, Carol has served with utmost distinction and with an unmatched commitment to the betterment of the city she so dearly loves. Whereas Carol's positive impact on the community can be seen throughout the entire city, including every tree-lined public street and boulevard, Schaefer Park, Orchardly Park, Farage Park, Cook Park, and Huffman Park, the City Administration Public Safety Building, Oakwood Community Center, and the J. David Fell Public Works Center, Loy Gardens, Elizabeth Gardens, How Extreme, Francine's Garden, and the enchanting Smith Memorial Gardens, referred to as one of the finest tiny public gardens in Ohio by Ohio Magazine. And whereas in her role as leisure services director and city horticulturist, Carol has shouldered primary responsibility for maintaining and continuing, continually enhancing the Oakwood community ambiance, which is matched by no other community in the Miami Valley. And whereas Carol Collins has served and continues to serve, Oakwood with an incredible sense of duty and personal integrity and with the highest degree of professionalism, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Oakwood that we accord very special public recognition and thanks to Carol D. Collins for reaching the 50-year milestone of outstanding public service to the city of Oakwood. It's signed today by all five members of city council and our city manager, Norbert Klopsh. Congratulations, Carol. Oh, we got to pass, do we want to pass this or not? Okay. All right, I will make, I will make a recommendation that we approve this resolution and ask for a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show, Lori, that everybody voted in the affirmative. Okay.
Who's going to say no? Come on. What's going on there? Can't take the 50 years back, can we?
That's right. So our next special guest is our state representative Andrea White, and she also has a proclamation from the State House in your honor. So Andrea, I look forward to hearing your report.
Well, thank you, Mayor Duncan, and I will tell you, it's truly an honor to be here, although I have only met Carol in, four years ago, when I started as a state representative and serving Oakwood in this fashion. But actually, Carol, you don't know this, but you actually befriended me about 36 years ago, when my family moved across from Orchardly Park in Kettering in our first house, and I had a young daughter, and I spent many a time in that park, exploring other parks and in Oakwood, Smith Gardens. And I say befriended because I'm not the only one. Literally, by now, of 50 years of service, probably in the hundreds of thousands of people who have passed through the city, enjoyed the parks, and what a friend does is finds, you find respite and rest, and you experience beauty and celebration and all those wonderful things that you have enabled for so many citizens. And so it's very appropriate that we are presenting, from the Ohio House of Representatives, a commendation for you, because truly you have had an impact for many people in Ohio. And I normally don't read a lot of these things, but I feel that this one is important to highlight a few sentences. And that is that, over the years, you have given freely of your time and abilities far beyond what was required or expected, and have displayed a genuine commitment to attaining the myriad goals of the city in a skillful and professional manner. You have always been sincere and energetic in your approach to your work, and the enthusiasm and expertise that you have shown in your endeavors have earned you the respect and the admiration of all those with whom you have been associated. Indeed, you have the satisfaction of knowing that you have provided a valuable service to this community and have established a record of achievement that will stand as a hallmark that others can emulate. So I just want to thank you and congratulate you, and thank you so much for all you have given to this community over half a century of service, and it's my honor to be here and give you this from the state of Ohio.
I'd like to have a point of personal privilege. I'd like to be in this photo, too. So along with Andrea, we'll have you in the middle, and I'll bring my resolution with you. Hers is much fancier than mine, but let me be right down.
What a surprise tonight. And thank you very much. All I can say is I've been very grateful for having the opportunity to serve the residents of the community. I have loved working for Oakwood, but also sharing my expertise with the residents and Oakwood City Council and Norv and the rest of staff. I'm very grateful, very honored, and very blessed to have such a wonderful career, and I hope I can continue to focus on all of the things that are necessary within the community to make Oakwood just a special place in which to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. And so we still have one more piece of legislation tonight, and Vice Mayor Byington is going to introduce that.
How do I top that? Yes, yeah, exactly, taxes. This is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Each tax year, the Montgomery County Budget Commission is required to certify its determination of the millage rates and the amounts the city will receive from its existing property tax levies. For 2024-25, the Budget Commission has determined that Oakwood will receive $1,607,186 from inside millage and $1,556,384 from outside millage tax levies. These figures are consistent with the city's projections. This is an annual resolution to, and to accept the county's determination, and I move that county adopt this resolution this evening.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation this evening. We now have a staff report from our Public Works Department. Doug Spittler is the director of Public Works, and we welcome you and look forward to hearing your report.
Thank you, mayor and council. It's a tough agenda to follow. Just real quick before I start, I wanted to say, this is probably my last presentation before Norv retires, and I know we're going to celebrate Norv in fashion here in another month, but I just wanted to say thank you for your, your leadership to us, your support for Public Works and the whole city, and the model for being what quality of work should be. So thank you for your leadership and support. We're going to miss you. So in refuse and recycling news, let me see if I can do this. I think I was here the last time in April, and this was just rolling out. So I just wanted to give a little bit more details as the program has rolled out on the Hefty Renew Program. This is something that did start back in April of the, this year. It is a, an additional option for recycling. It's a volunteer, volunteer basis recycling. It is labeled as a hard-to-recycle plastic recycling. Residents purchase the hefty orange bags from local retailers, and this is a hefty direct program. So what goes in those bags? It is those hard-to-recycle items, so things you could not normally put in the recycling stream now can go inside this bag. The bag then goes in your toter or at a place at our recycle center, which I'll show on the next slide. So you can put in there items such as the film items, the things that are really hard to get rid of, so the bags, the potato chip liners, the cereal liners, vegetable bags, Styrofoam, and all kinds of different filmed items, also eating utensils. Those go directly in the bag. That bag gets tied up, and it goes right through the recycling stream. It's pulled out down at Rumkey, and it goes to a separate stream. So again, you just fill up the bag, drop it in your container at home or at the Public Works Center, and those items are renewed into different resources. Specifically at our recycle center, on the left is our cardboard area. Those are our four containers for cardboard. The next container that sits by itself there is the commingled and recyclables container, and that's the, the blown-up version on the right. And that's where we've put the signs so folks know where to put that. That's for commingled recyclables. That bag goes in there tied and into that container. Those are separated once they get to Rumkey. Then we have a small, two, two containers, two toters for specialty or seasonal items. And then we also have a larger area for yard debris, which is going to become really popular here in a couple of weeks. Other refuse and recycling options, we do have our recycling and yard waste drop-off facility that I just mentioned. It's 24/7/365 for cardboard commingled recycling and yard debris. We have our monthly self-dumping at Public Works. That's the first Saturday of every month it's open to the public, residents of Oakwood, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. We have refuse dumpsters available. Those are free for green waste only, so if you're doing a yard improvement project with green waste brush only, those are free. Otherwise, there is a small fee for household or remodeling-type debris. For do-it-yourself projects, $115 plus the weight. Another popular event that's coming up on September the 28th, that's Saturday, September the 28th, from 8:00 to 11:00. It's at our Public Works Center. It's the Free Community Document Shredding Day. You can bring any kind of paper products, microfilm, microfiche, other secure or confidential materials. That is held inside of our Public Works facility. If you've never been there before, you come in through, employees take that out for you. You don't even have to get out of your car. If it rains, it's, it's inside, so it's rain or shine. Also, on the same day, we have our Styrofoam Recycling Event that is coordinated from Montgomery County Solid Waste at their main location, which this quarter is the Kettering-Trent Arena. It's 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Or if you want to bring your items to the, to a local location, it's our recycling and yard waste drop-off facility. That's at the Oakwood, our Oakwood Public Works Center. That is hosted by Green Oakwood, and their hours are 9:00 to 11:30. So a little bit shorter hours, but you can bring that to the Public Works Yard. So those events are on the same day, but they're in separate areas, so the traffic will be maintained, and you should not have any problem with either event. Another very popular event, it's hosted quarterly by our Oakwood Rotary Club. They collect household hazardous waste, those items that cannot go into the waste stream. Those items, such as household cleaners, batteries, automotive fluid, paint products, will be collected by the Oakwood Rotary Club. The next event is Saturday, October the 19th. You sign up by calling the 937-296-5155 number. You leave your detailed information. That list is forwarded to the Rotary Club. It is free for Oakwood residents. They do accept donations for their community projects. Leaf collection. So this is the popular event. I know at my house, they're already falling, and I've already collected them. A couple of years ago, when we opened the recycling center, we have the yard, large yard debris area, so instead of just offering self-service several days out of the, out of the month, we offer it 24/7. So if anyone's starting early, they can bring those leaves anytime to the yard debris facility at the Public Works Center. Our citywide curbside collection begins on October the 14th. It ends on December the 20th. That's a 10-week collection period. Every location is collected five times. Our schedule does vary. It is published, but it can vary a little bit depending on the weather and the volume and the way they're falling. I think the volume is going to be very heavy very quick. Another item that we talked about, we purchased late last year, is the Mr. Manhole Machine. That's a trade name for it. It's a, it's a manhole cutter. The device is on the left. It fits on the front of our front-end loader. The cutting teeth are the items that are, the legs that are in gold. On the right is an actual constructed manhole that we did on West Thruston. So far, we've done about 25 manholes citywide. We've done them on Acorn, West Thruston, West Chants, Kramer, and Schaefer Boulevard. Our crew has become very adept at this very quickly, and I think they look really nice. If you've driven any, passed any of them, they ride very well. The last time, we had not taken delivery of this unit yet. It was on order, and we finally got it. This is our new street sweeper. If anyone's seen it, it's, it's very unique. It looks about like a Zamboni. It's, it's really unique because it's small, which is fantastic. It has the four-wheel steering. As you can see in the picture, the steering articulates, so it can maneuver very tight. Not quite a single turn around a median knows, but it's multiple turns, and I know Mr. Stevens is, is very passionate about that. So with, with the-
I like clean streets.
I know you do.
Okay, that's it. That's all it is. I just like the streets clean.
So on the, on the front of the unit also is a third broom, so that really assists us with the edging. We can raise the broom up and sweep off the gutter as we go, and it does help us with the medianos, is it goes left and right. But our crew is getting very accustomed to this. It's a new piece of equipment. It works very well. It's, it's a very large vacuum, and we're very happy to have it. Sewer cleaning. Been reporting on this now for a couple of years. Our goal is to clean the entire city with our sanitary sewers. We have about 40 miles, which is roughly 210,000 feet. We want to clean that every three years, which is about 70,000 feet a year. Our first year in '23, last year, we cleaned about 140,000, so we were ahead of schedule. This year, we're only about 38,000. One of our employees did take another position in the city, and we just filled that position with the, this will be their main job. It helps us proactively troubleshoot trouble spots that we have around the city. We also, this is a picture of our camera, our camera vehicle. We can also deploy this to look at sewers underground and look for trouble spots or any collapsing sewers or anything that we bring back while cleaning it. Last year, we cleaned about a mile, and this year, we're about half of that. So with our new employee, we'll be back in business. A few water distribution system updates. This year, we replaced about 50 feet of water main and installed several valves around Far Hills and Park Avenue. That was prior to the paving project. We knew we had a troubled area there. We had several repair bands on pipe that were going through the duct banks for AT&amp;T. We knew we had to get that out of the way. That was done earlier this spring. We replaced a little section of water main and valves also at Harmon Avenue and Park Avenue. I know if Mrs. Hilton was here, she saw that work firsthand. Same thing, we had some bands and clamps that we had to get out of the system. We're also planning to bury the electric feed to well number six. That's part of our fir wood well. The wire is now above ground, and it's through a wooded area, so we've had several trees fall on that and, that inoperative, so we're going to bury the electric to prevent that. And then at Peach Orchard, West Peach Orchard, we have an underground vault that was an old pump station. That has several repair bands on that, and that needs to be removed as well. So that work will be completed this fall. Winter operations. We are down a little bit on salt, but that was planned. We were looking at potentially building a new building, which we will be doing next year. Also, the price of salt last year was at $91.62. Since then, we're part of a cooperative purchasing group around the area. They bid the salt this year. Salt prices came in at $63.97, so quite a significant savings. That's available to us right now, and so we will be ordering salt on the better price. We typically use about 800 tons. The last couple of years, you can see, we were $564 last year, last season, 741's the year, the season before, but roughly for us, it's about 800 tons. So we're glad that the salt prices came down. They did bid two years. Did not put the price, I think it's $73 next year, so it's, it's still under the last two years, and we're happy to see those costs come down. Just a reminder to call Ohio 811. That was formerly the Highway Utility Protection Service, or Oops. It's a free service. If you're going to do any kind of fall yard planting, gardening, aerating, planting a tree, it is required that you call. The public utilities are marked. Anything on private property is typically not marked unless you ask them, and sometimes they will mark the services. So Highway 811, call before you dig. And lastly, a few personnel changes that we had. We had, we celebrated three retirees this summer. Mike Kingdom retired after 34 years as a maintenance worker. Lonzie Kurt retired after 29 years. Steve Coontz just recently retired after 35 years. Lonzie was a truck driver. Steve was one of our general service workers on refuse, and Steve was very, very popular, I'm finding out. A lot of people come in to wish him well. New employees. We had Brandon Kuzner and Jacob Dupler. They're both general service workers, working in refuse. They both started April the 8th. Peter Kurtz joined us on July the 8th. And the gentleman, Jason Atkins, he's our water sewer technician. That's the gentleman that's going to be working on our sewer cleaning. He started on September 9th, so he's just here just a few days. We are recruiting two general service workers as well. So with that, I conclude, unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Spittler? All right. Well, thank you for that excellent, concise report.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming and letting us be informed. And is it going to snow this year?
I think it will.
Okay.
With 800 tons, I hope it does.
All right. So I think the last couple of years, we have not had much snow.
Not had much snow.
Okay, I look forward, look forward to it snowing in Oakwood. All right.
Thank you.
It's now time for our city manager's report. City Manager Klopsch.
Thank you, your honor. You know, I've said this before, but we have about 100 employees, about 88, 89 full-time, and the rest are permanent part-time. And about a third of the organization belongs to the Public Works Department. And as you know, they take care of all the important stuff here in our, in our city. Water system, sanitary sewer, the stormwater system, the roadway network, traffic signals. We have 17 signalized intersections. And of course, our very comprehensive refuse and recycling program, which, as you know from our, our guests at our recent workshop we had, keeps growing from the county. So Doug takes care of an awful lot of stuff, and it's 24/7. Saturday, a week ago, I was coming back from a fifth-grade tackle football game. My grandson in Centerville, which is a hoot all by itself to watch those fifth graders, but in full gear, and I was, came back to, to hear about a water main break, and, well, all day that next day on Sunday, the Public Works Department crew dealt with not one but two different breaks that we had here in our town. So it's a, it's absolutely a 24/7 responsibility, and Doug never knows when, when the phone's going to ring. So thank you for, for all that you do. Now I have to comment on Carol. On, on August 18th, you were all there, Sunday evening. We had a fabulous celebration for both Carol and for Smith Gardens, and we kind We had a fabulous celebration for both Carol and for Smith Gardens, and we kind of focused on Smith Gardens, I would say primarily initially that evening, but then when we moved to the community center, we pivoted a little bit towards Carol. But as you all heard, and I just want to repeat this here for the public, Carol came here in 1974, right when the city was receiving Smith Gardens as a gift from the Carlton and Jeanette Smith family. And we had no other garden remotely close to this that belonged to the public here in Oakwood, and consequently, we had no one on staff capable of taking care of it. And that's when Carol stepped in, right out of Ohio State University. And I arrived here kind of adjacent from a consulting firm in late 1989, and then on staff in 1992. So, when I got here in '92, Carol had already been here for 18 years. So, I don't know this firsthand, but I've been told that essentially from day one, Carol embraced Smith Gardens. While her fingerprints are everywhere around Oakwood, every boulevard, every beautiful hanging basket, every park, every community event, you know, our family fall festival's coming up, and Carol's favorite, the Holiday of Lights in December, all these different things Carol takes care of. The most important, I would argue, is Smith Gardens, and Carol has taken that responsibility as personally as you could over the past 50 years, and the gardens show it. And I want to hold up the, this is a plaque that we presented to Carol at the event at the OCC on August 18th, and we also have a commendation for Smith Gardens that Representative White presented. And again, I just want to publicly thank you, Carol, for everything you've done and you're going to continue to do. And I'll just end with a little humor here. I mentioned at the event at the OCC on August 18th that I feel ashamed at retiring after just 32 years here, standing next to somebody who's been here 50 years and is not retiring. But anyway, thank you, Carol, for all that you do. Couple other quick things. Very happy to report that the most disruptive work on the Far Hills resurfacing project is now completed. It was wrapped up last week, and that's the grinding off of the pavement and the resurfacing. This week, a subcontractor will be putting asphalt surface treatment down. It'll look a little bit rough, but it'll go very quickly. They put the liquid down. It soaks into the top surface of the asphalt and essentially extends the life of the new pavement. After they put the, it's called rejuvenation down, they put sand down on top of it, and a few hours later, they sweep up the sand, and that process is done. Then about a week after that, another subcontractor will be back to put the permanent roadway striping down, the center lines down the middle of the street, the white lines, all the crosswalks and the stop bars. So, that's, we're looking probably a week and a half from now when that will be done, and that'll essentially mark the completion of that project. And this resurfacing of the two miles of State Route 48 in Oakwood typically circles around every 12 to 13 years. So, it'll be done now for a long period of time. The sidewalk curb and apron repairs continue in the Far Hills Business District, but we're getting close to the end of it. I would say just another week, maybe two at the most, and then all that work in the district will be done, and the contractor will move to some concrete street repairs in the Dever, O'Reilly, Ashridge, and Woodstock area, as we've talked about previously. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for our city manager? Right, hearing, well, maybe. So, if you decided to change your mind and work another 18 years, you'd catch up to Carol, and then she'd be here for 68 years. You can't catch her.
I can't catch her.
You can't catch her. Okay, very good. So, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to share with the citizens the process of identifying a new city manager. It's best described as a series of deliberate, thoughtful, and at times, hard conversations. I'm grateful to the leadership of Mayor Duncan, who kept the process focused and timely. I'm equally appreciative of my fellow council members, who offered their sincere assessments of candidates, listened attentively, challenged us, challenged each other, and we didn't necessarily agree, and kept our minds open, focusing on what candidate was the best fit. And also, although the process took many hours, I just want to say it was a pleasure going through the process with you, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Turbin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, I wanted to congratulate the Ohio, the Oakwood schools for another great report card. The Ohio Department of Education and Workforce released their 2023-24 report cards, and Oakwood earned a five-star rating, which is the highest, along with Centerville, Bellbrook, Springboro, and Tip City. The five-star rating means that we have significantly exceeded the state's standards of academic achievement. Our performance rating is 99%, and that relates to the student testing primarily, and our four-year graduation rate is 98.3. So, congratulations to our school. Your commitment to education supports and reinforces Oakwood as a premier residential community.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. First, I'd like to thank my fellow council members, and especially Mayor Duncan, for all their hard work and extra time devoted to finding a new city manager. As Ms. Jackson said, it was an intense process at times, and I think we made a wonderful choice in Katy to lead our city for many years to come. Also, I'd like to thank the Oakwood citizens once again, I feel like I've mentioned this a few times, for their patience with not only the stormwater project we had on Far Hills a few months ago, but also the Far Hills repaving project that due to unforeseen circumstances that I'm sure everyone's read about, has taken longer than it should have. The good news is, as Mr. Klops mentioned, we're near the end of the project and should be good to go in the next couple of weeks. Finally, I'd like to congratulate Cindy again and her staff for another Auditor of State Award. Well done. And finally, I have to mention Carol and her wonderful 50 years of service to the citizens and city of Oakwood. Fabulous job, well done. I can't even imagine the amount of time you've put in. I mean, we put in hours after, you know, 5 o'clock, but you go to every event after 5 o'clock. I can't even imagine. It's kind of like when I was coaching football for that tiny little pay rate, and when you look at the hours, I mean, we might be paying you $3.42 an hour, you know, that kind of thing, you know? So, congratulations and well done, and thank you for everything you've done.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Well, it's always tough because they get all the ones that I was going to say, but I will just add that I want to thank all the folks who got awards tonight. The level of work that people put into their yards and to their houses and just exemplifies the pride that I think everybody has in the community that we live in. We have a very special community. I think it's nice that Katy gets to see some of the pride that we take in our own community and in recognizing those folks who go above and beyond the call of duty. Although, you know, when you drive around our community, it's, I think that the folks who make the decision on these things must have an extremely difficult job because everybody really takes pride in their properties, and they show that. So, I just want to thank all the folks who came tonight, those folks who were watching at home. Keep up the good work because it really, it shows the character of Oakwood.
Thank you. Representative White and I have another special event to attend on Wednesday, and it's in honor of Clara Hockstein. Clara, you know, her spouse is deceased, but he was one of, owned one of the original furrier shops in the shops of Oakwood. When he was a child in the '30s, he was emigrated from Germany to England and then ultimately found his way to New York City where he learned his craft, and then ultimately found his way to Dayton where he opened up one of the first furrier stores in Oakwood. They, he has, he passed away, and they've since closed the store. Well, Clara is now living at One Lincoln Park, and as it turns out, she lives one floor above my mother. And Clara is turning 100 years old, and so Andrea and I are going over to the Oakwood Room inside One Lincoln Park to present her a proclamation. Clara has already invited a bunch of her friends, my mother included. She's only 91, but we're going to have a heck of a time on Wednesday. But we look forward to presenting our proclamation, and it's just another cool event. So, I will see you on Wednesday, Andrea. And I have no other comments this evening. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is on Monday, October 7, and we are adjourned.